All right, it is 7:00 PM and I'd like to call this meeting to order. While this meeting is being held in person, we are also offering the option for the public to participate through Zoom if preferred. Instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the City Council Calendar item listed on the front page of MissionKS.org. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robin, please call the roll.
Thomas?
Here.
Holdinghouse?
Here.
Loudon?
Here.
Ryer?
Here.
Kringle?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Carpenter-Davis?
Here.
Josie?
Here.
All right, we do not have any public hearings this evening, so we will move into our special presentations. We have three special presentations tonight. Our first presentation is our annual Arbor Day proclamation. This year Arbor Day will be celebrated on Friday, April 26th. I'd like to present this proclamation to Mr. Almany and ask our Parks Recreation and Tree Commission and our Parks Recreation Tree Commission and ask Penn to give us an update on our Arbor Day activities.
So, we are meeting with Rushton Elementary's second graders, which we do annually to discuss the Arbor Day festivities. We share some educational pieces. We have them create little medallions that they can hang on trees in neighborhood parks. It's typically waterworks, but this year we'll have it in an alternate location. And we've invited the mayor to come along and share some of her favorite trees and activities and insights. So, it's a wonderful time to just spread the knowledge and beauty of trees within our community.
Right, great, thank you Penn. And our second presentation that's related is our 2023 Arbor Day poster contest winner from Rushton Elementary School. Penn, will you and Jackie's here? Yep, Ms. Gamison, please come forward to share your presentation.
Absolutely. Jackie, it looks like you were personally invited from the mayor to join.
Come on up, come on up.
So, each year we partner, the Mission Parks Recreation Tree Commission partners with Rushton Elementary teachers, and this year that was Ms. Graham and Ms. Thomas. And they take educational materials that are supplied by Kansas Forest Service and they share them with their fifth grade students. And as part of that, they're invited to then participate in a poster creation process. So, this year 38 of their fifth graders participated in a poster contest. The teachers choose the top 10, and then those 10 are displayed at the Powell Community Center for residents of Mission to then vote on their favorite. And we did that this year, and I'm pleased to invite Karthy Vishnu along with Mr. and Mrs. Vishnu to join us here. I'm pleased to present to you the very, the first place winner of our 2024 poster contest, Karthy Vishnu. So, congratulations, Karthy. She didn't tell us how many hours she studied and took to draw, but I'm sure her talents came through. It's absolutely beautiful picture, matted in green. So, we're gonna bring it up to the council so you can get a closer look and then hopefully get a picture with the mayor.
Great.
Congratulations once again, Karthy.
And I got to see it when I came to Rushton, but can you come show the rest of the council your really cool poster?
We would love to see it. I love the bird.
Yeah, and the theme this year was forest habitats, right?
Yeah, part of the contest. So, this could be hung in their living room. Well, we do have photocopies, colorful copies at Anderson Park and Broadwood Park on display.
Great, should we get Solly down there? Yeah, yeah. Wait for Solly, she's coming.
Do you want me, yes, let's go to Jackie there. She wanted to come onto the podium, so I can come down here. All right. Hi, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jackie.
We encourage you.
We're always organized. Yeah. You know, take care.
There are posters in the side doors at Broadwood and over here in Anderson Park, pictures of the.
Thank you for all you do, Jackie.
What? So, congratulations again to our first place winner and all of our participants and winners from Rushton. And thanks to all the students who were in the contest this year, and of course, our Rushton staff who are always such great partners on our annual Arbor Day events. So, next, we are to have a presentation from Commissioner Fast, but she's not here quite yet, so we'll move into our next presentation. So, our next presentation this evening will be comments from Ward One Council member, Hillary Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to do my best not to get too emotional, which I think I've already failed at. But I am, tonight is gonna be my last council meeting with you all, and I just want to say thank you for the six wonderful years. And I, again, apologize, I've been very emotional. I have said it before, I would do this job forever if I could. And I've absolutely loved the work. I don't have prepared remarks other than just general notes, but I was driving my eight-year-old to school this morning, and she said to me, she goes, "Mom, I'm really glad you're retiring." It was like, yeah, me too. But that's not the case, but I do feel like I am leaving something that is so near and special to me, and it feels a little bit like losing a lift. And I am so grateful for my time in this city. I am so grateful for my time with each of you. You are some of the kindest, most civil, wonderful people I've ever met, and Mission is just so lucky, so lucky that we have residents and leadership that is filled with people who are ready to talk about tough issues in a kind, thoughtful way. And I've been so lucky to be a part of that. I'm excited for my Wednesday nights back. I did a, I did a little calculation, pushing 250 meetings, and I think that's conservative. And they've all been worth it, but I don't really know what it's like to be a mom and not do this job. I realize that, so I'm excited for those Wednesday nights back. I'm excited for more time with my kids, but I am going to miss you all, Solly. You make everyone, everyone around you braver, so thank you for making Mission braver and all of us braver. Laura, every time, again, guys, I'm so sorry, this is absolutely ridiculous. I'm a little sleep deprived, so I'm gonna blame it on that. But Laura, every time I run a meeting of my own, I've told you this before, every time I run a meeting of my own in my day job, I channel you. And I don't think I'm the only person who does that. You inspire everyone. Mission is in such good hands. Thank you, it's been lovely, and I wish you all the best. I'm gonna head out early and let business get to business, and I hope to see you all soon.
We might have some remarks to share with you as well, so don't run away quite just yet. So, I'll open it up first to any comments from council. Yeah, Mary?
So, I first met you when I was volunteering on PRT. I'm also gonna get emotional because that's just who I am. I don't know if I would be sitting here, not just as a council member, but also as a mother on council if it wasn't for you and your guidance and your example. So, thank you for that, because it's, it is a lot to, you know, give up time with your kids, but you've led the way. So, thank you for that, you're a force, and I can't wait to see what other things that you do around Johnson County or elsewhere. It's gonna be beautiful and wonderful, and thank you for all of your leadership.
I'm gonna go next, just because I'm next in line here. I remember we sat on that bus for our little field trip. We were both on the Capital Improvements Committee as volunteers, getting involved in city stuff. Rest in peace. And you then, a couple of years later, called me and said, "There's a space, are you gonna run?" And if you hadn't done that, I probably wouldn't have. So, I absolutely wouldn't be here if it weren't for you, and thank you so much for showing me, you know, what leadership is in this position, and I'm gonna miss you, but hopefully we'll be able to see one another, you know, personally.
Any other comments from council?
Well, you're not gonna get chocolate anymore because you're not coming with me, so I brought you two pounds of your own chocolate to make sure that you could sustain yourself. I want to tell you how much I appreciate you, because several times you and I have agreed to disagree on, you know, functional issues, policy issues, ordinances, we go on. But you have always been kind, and you've always shown compassion in everything you do. You always rank number one when it comes to caring about what other people do and think, and it shows in Mission. It showed before, and it will show after, because you're leaving a legacy of compassion and care, and that's far limited in the world today, so thank you.
Yes, Cheryl. Brian, Michelle.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just go in order. So, obviously, I haven't worked with you a ton on council because I haven't been that long, but I feel like I've been kind of in your orbit for a few years, and I've just always been struck by how you bring your whole self to everything that you do. Like, I've never once had to wonder, like, "Wonder what Hillary is like in real life?" Like, it's just who you are, and I think that's, that's a challenge to do, to just always be completely yourself, and I will absolutely miss, miss seeing that here during the meetings.
Hillary, I remember when I started thinking about running for council, and I met with you, and you helped me with a life-changing moment that I will never forget. You're a futurist, you're the best millennial I think I've ever known, and you're always wanting to do better and more. And I think there's some opportunities in the Kansas Senate, so I look forward to your next venture. Thank you so much for being my friend.
I would like to go real quick, if that's okay.
Yeah, Trent, Trent from online?
Yeah, I'm really bummed that I'm not there in person tonight for this, I apologize. But Hillary, it was always so fun to try to think of ways to make you laugh before and after meetings, sitting by you, and just getting to do Ward One meetings with you. You were, of course, already the ward incumbent when I came on, and just learning more about our residents and the way that you approach constituent issues was really inspiring, and I'm sorry that these words virtually are all I can offer, but rest assured when I'm back in town and get to be next, you know, see you again, I'll, I'd be happy to celebrate appropriately.
And Mayor, if I may?
Yes, yeah, go ahead, Ben.
Hillary, so much has already been said that I would certainly echo, but you've been such a welcoming mentor and friend and sounding board since I've joined the council and since I've been involved with city stuff in any capacity. I really appreciate it, it's been great working with you, and it's been all the better to have you to turn to and learn from, so thank you.
Laura, before I say a few things, did you also want to make a comment?
I did, and many have said I couldn't. A lot of those comments have been made, but Hillary, since you did the math, you're 250 meetings. I think you owe me 250 mince, because her trick was always to just pop in right before and just, I'm just, just gonna take one, just gonna take one. So, I will definitely miss that, but I will miss your leadership, I think, in watching you come onto the council and grow into your role as a council member. You know, so many times we ask the question, "Why?", and I think you ask the question, "Why not?", which is a different way to push us to be better and different. I will also always remember you, so somebody else is gonna have to take up the charge of, "Can't we do more and can't we do it faster?"
Fill in my comments, Laura.
Yes, sorry. And then also just, you have always been such a strong advocate for telling our community why and what we're doing and sharing more information sometimes, and I think a lot of your push and encouragement of us has been reflected in our social media presence and just engagement in general overall. So, thank you for that, and we wish you all the best, and you know, the streets don't roll up at night, so you're always welcome to come back and visit us anytime, but thank you for your service.
All right, and I wrote down my comments, so I wouldn't stumble through it too, but Hillary, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for your six years of service to the council and Mission. As I think most of you know, I had the pleasure of running with Hillary in 2017 when we were both first elected to the City Council, and I've appreciated the opportunity to serve alongside you all these years. It truly won't be the same without you. I'm so proud of your willingness to always step up and lead, and wanted to recognize your service as a committee chair and vice chair over the years. Your voice on sustainability issues has been particularly important, and your service to the Sustainability Commission, a member of the Climate Action Task Force, is very much appreciated. I look forward to getting the opportunity to continue to work with you in your role at Climate Action KC, and thanks to your agreeing to continue as a member of our Climate Action Task Force, you won't be rid of us quite yet. So, so I think for your, for your time on council, and this echoes a lot of what's already been said, that you'll be remembered for always speaking your mind and your zealous advocacy on behalf of Ward One constituents. I appreciate, like Laura said, that you're always working to push the city to do more, faster, on critical infrastructure projects and quality of life amenities. Mission is a better place because of your passion and commitment to our city. So, if everyone could please join me one last time, and thanking Councilmember Thomas for her dedicated service, and you will be missed, but we won't, like I said, we won't let you escape entirely. Oh, yes, wait, we have, we have things for you. All right, no Commissioner Fast yet, right? No worries. So, we do not have any items related to the issuance of notes or bonds this evening, so we will move into our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has four items tonight. Our council committees met on the seventh and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agree that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move the City Council adopt the consent agenda as printed, items for A through 4D.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Loudon?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Josie?
Hi.
Holdinghouse?
Hi.
Carpenter-Davis?
Hi.
Kringle?
Hi.
Ryer?
Hi.
Hoshin-Cairns?
All right, next we'll move into public comment. If any members of the public would like to make a comment on items that are not on our agenda tonight, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak, and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand, but stay seated, and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also, be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. I think I saw one hand, come on up.
I will pass this around. I can't duplicate it, but it has something to do with the fact that I'm speaking.
Okay.
And if you'll just pass it down. Been a while since I've spoke to this City Council.
Can you give your, can you give your name and city of residence, too?
My name is David Miller. I live in Overland Park. I own Warner Specialty Foods, which is going to celebrate its 50th anniversary in October. We have been around for five mayors, the one being Sylvester Powell. Now, that being said, I was only instructed one thing when I came down here, from my help, my lady who runs my store. I'm 78 years old, I'm German, and I'm unfiltered. What she said to me was, "Be nice", which I'll try very hard to be, but there's a few things I want to address. First of all, I wouldn't be here with the exception of yesterday, I was coming down the street at the speed limit, because I tried to go the speed limit, and the reason why is because I see my customers on Saturday run for their life when they're crossing the street. I started to pull in a parking spot, a guy comes flying up behind me in a pickup truck, leaning on the horn because I'm not parking fast enough. That probably wouldn't have been a problem if the lanes hadn't been left the way they were. That being said, my help or my, my customers that are old or older, or walkers my age, have to walk out in the street and down to the sidewalk to come up. The sidewalks are absolutely filthy. The corners of the sidewalks are full of dirt, leaves, trash, everything else. It's not my responsibility to clean it up, it's the city's. Now, when I bought the business in 1995, I used to work late at night. They sent city people out at like 11, 12 o'clock at night to clean the streets, so I know that that's a possibility. It's not happening anymore. There's a planter in front of my door that is a mulch bed, there's nothing in it. First of all, it shouldn't have been put there because it blocks the egress or the entrance of my store, which is a safety hazard. Second of all, there's nothing in it, the kids walk on it around the top of it, and if they fall off, who's liable? Me, you, the city? These are problems that I've ignored and have to be addressed. You all saw the picture. That was what my employee saw on Monday morning, not recently, but when she came to work, because the trench wasn't picked up. Why not? I've got opossums living there, raccoons. This is not acceptable. I don't live in Mission, but I could live in Mission and run for office. I could rent an apartment and run for office. But what I remember is that fiasco down at the end of the street has been going on for 25 years. I guarantee you that the mayor, Sylvester Powell, would not have put up with that for an instant. That man moved the torch, the Olympic torch, from shiny Mission Parkway to Johnson Drive. That's how much power he had. And he was an attorney. Some of you folks are attorneys. All I hear is, "Well, we can't do anything about it." I'll bet you could. I'm from the east. We would never put up with this nonsense. And I haven't lived back there in 50 years, but I grew up where things got done, one way or another. You sent, you sent the tough guys out to talk to the people to get it done, but it got done. I can't see where the town is improving any with bicycle lanes and all this other stuff. That's putting icing on a curb cake, as far as I'm concerned. The problems need to be addressed that we have, and then we can move forward.
All right.
Mayor, a few mayors back bought all their property alone, made a walkway in a park and tore down buildings, invested hundreds of thousands of dollars, and then couldn't pay for it to turn around a driveway tax.
Right, Mr. Miller? We appreciate your comments, thank you for coming out tonight, we are past over your time.
Oh, okay. Well, like I said, it's our 50th anniversary, and we plan to be here another 50 years, but that's up to the City Council. Debbie has a question.
Well, you and I talked a little bit, and I said, "If you have concerns, come." One thing I would suggest and recommend, that as things come up, instead of waiting and coming to fruition on, you know, all these things, that you let us know more often. You know, like, this is happening, this, instead of waiting and everything coming at this, I, that's just a recommendation, because it's frustrating to you, and I would be too.
I agree with you, but I'm certain, or any other resident or business owner, certainly have to follow up on what the city ought to be doing. Now, thank you.
Robin, do we have any comments online?
Oh, maybe we'll say one other thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
The town is a mile and a half wide, at best. There's no reason to turn on the sirens to race from one end down to the other. My people say, "Oh, they must have turned on the donut sign." That's why they flew down the street. There's no reason for that. Thank you.
Okay, I think I do see that Commissioner Fast has joined us, so we will return to our special presentations. Commissioner Fast, come on up.
Thank you for accommodating me. We had a joint county commission parks board meeting this evening. So, I just wanted to say how often I hear from residents that they've moved to the northeast because of the thriving downtown, because of your Thursday night market is what attracted them to northeast, and many are moving, it just amazes me, all the areas they're coming from because of what your hard work with the city of Mission. So, move to the next one. So, I wanted to also relay to you, our Johnson County Waste staff has really raved about how wonderful it was to work with your staff, and that the process has just been really seamless, and the neighbors that they have met with, they've had several community outreach meetings, and have really appreciated that feedback. If you, you know, receive any feedback, they're in or smells for odor, they can go online and complain online through an online complaint, or just have them email me. So, as you know, we've started the Waste, Johnson County Waste development there. I live close to Noll. There's many trucks on Noll that I haven't heard too many complaints about the truck traffic, and this will be for at least another five years until we get the fully operational. And we were able to get EPA funds, state funds, so there's gonna be significant cost savings from accessing federal and state funds for this project. It's the oldest wastewater plant in Johnson County. So, a program I don't know if, if you know that much about, but you know, I read your newsletter, I love it, you have a great newsletter, so please advertise about our wastewater backup prevention program. That backup prevention and your residents do not need to know if it's water or sewer water in their basement. Just have them, they can go online and put through our online system, through Johnson County Waste System, or call directly and ask them, and they will come out and look to see if they need plumbing modifications, a backup preventer, and a new program that was, and a number of Mission residents were, had been part of this pilot, and you'll see signs, I saw some on Lamar with the Joko Inflow Program, and so many of these older homes in northeast. And so many of these older homes in Northeast are stormwater hooks into the sewer system and which then causes backup. And so they are working in this pilot range off of Marty Street in Mission. And they've completed, had a large number of residences volunteer only who've had them come out and unhook the stormwater drains from their sewer drains, which will help them with backup flow. So please let your residents know about these programs. So the Johnson County Library Antioch, which is now the new Marion branch is open. It's a beautiful building and it was a project in connection to the city of Marion. Right now we're planning, working with the city of Prairie Village. There's been no decision if our Corinth branch will go into Harmon Park to be a joint arrangement with the new Prairie Village Community Center. Prairie Village will have a vote on that. So our library board might decide just to rebuild where Corinth is now. That building is very old, constant flooding. There are certain parts you can see they have braces because it's kind of going, the floor is going in. So either way, that building needs to be rebuilt, whether they stay where they're at or go with Prairie Village and Harmon Park. And that's our next CIP project for the county library program. So as you know, cars is very valuable to our Northeast cities, all of our cities. Johnson County is the only county that has the cars program in the state. When I go to the Kansas Association of Counties, no other county has that sort of collaborative relationship. We've been doing it since 1993. There was a time and when I've gone through the history, that commissioner said, no, we're going to keep the money for themselves. But there was such an outcry and, and today's commission is fully supportive of this, supportive of this collaborative relationship because when our city roads are thriving, our county is thriving. And it's for a smaller city, it's been so impactful for you. So the next one is on the stormwater program. That program was developed the same year as cars in 93. So many more projects are needed. I know with Mission, you've had a number of projects and a continuing growing need. And as you can see, the sales tax because of our growth in the county, I mean, it really isn't enough funds to meet the growing density that we're seeing in Johnson County and the, the growth with extreme rain events. At some point, I think we are going to need to meet, and I brought this up with our cities. Do we increase that sales tax in 2026 or 2027? I forgot, but that courthouse sales tax will come off and you will no longer receive that. So county government, we have a max on our sales tax and we have to go to the legislature too. So we don't have as much authority as cities do for sales tax. But I really think the sales tax of stormwater is something that we will need a discussion at the future with, with all the growth. In our unincorporated areas right now in Johnson County, we only have 38% left that's unincorporated. In 2000, we had 60% unincorporated. So this incredible growth and density in our county, which means more surfaces and more stormwater needs. So the next one, this, and I'm sure that you've probably seen the Mid-America Regional Council released a report about our landfill. This is, this is my quote in the paper that alarm bells are ringing. So our region has seven landfills. And when one fills up, let's say if one fills up in Missouri, then trash goes to the next one or then it could come to Kansas. So we're, we're really in this all together. We're one boat and as one or more start filling up, that could mean that we have to transport our trash and a longer ways. And our environment official said it takes 10 years to permit a trap, I mean a landfill. So right now the worst case scenario is 20 years or best case is 40 years. 25% of that is related to food waste. And we do not have a composting facility in Johnson County. We do have a study and we'll definitely share with that, looking at how we could create a composting facility in Johnson County. Missouri Organics really can't take anymore. And so that is something that we really need to address. How do we get that food waste out of our landfill stream? And we have a solid waste management plan. Debbie, you were on that committee for years that we're working on revising, looking at. We don't regulate apartments, the haulers for multifamily. We don't regulate commercial. Many of the apartment complexes have told the county they don't have room for glass recycling or cardboard. But so that is going to be a discussion that we need to have when new apartments come up that they have room for glass, cardboard or food composting. That we're at that point that we're going to really have to have some hard discussions. So one of the good news because of the Nelson being renovated and redeveloped, you know, that was kind of a hard hazardous waste drop off because you were going into the Nelson plant. Now it is off of 69th and College. It's wonderful. You can just make appointment online, drive through, you can drop off your batteries, light bulbs. You can purchase, there's a much larger store to purchase recycled paints. It is busy. It's been exciting to see and because it's in a better location, more people down south are using it. They weren't coming up to Mission. So that's a really great addition to our county. So mental health is a real passion of mine. I'm a mental health provider. The county has really worked on how do we integrate mental health with our, our first responders? And thank you, Mission, you have a co-responder. What an impact that has. One of the things I worked on is how do we integrate 911 with our 988? And we did the analysis and like 25% of our 911 calls were mental health. And so when you call 911, there you have the fire, the ambulance, the police, all in your front yard. When that could be an anxiety attack, suicidal ideation. So now we have brought our 988 to the same building as our 911 and the Mid-America Regional gave okay that our 911 system can be routed over to our 988 and they can dispatch mobile mental health response. So I'm really excited. We're just starting with that mobile mental health response. Also, we're, we are just beginning to open up a crisis youth stabilization center. When your police go out and it's a youth, they may take them into our juvenile justice intake center, but then often they take them home because there's, you know, there's no beds in children's mercy. And this would be for those youth who have repeated calls from police, repeated domestic disturbances so that the police then would have an option for the family to our crisis stabilization center. And there, there's our Lusterous Mayor on that picture. I love that picture. Exciting to see the new 87th street bus. Also the routes that come through Mission, you've been a huge supporter. I remember back in the day when we opened up that transit center. And so this year, and we're going to need your involvement. We just approved a transit study. Where do we go next? Is our focus vulnerable populations? Is our focus workforce? Johnson County has always struggled with our fixed lines. We have some that work, a lot of them don't work and we don't have enough ridership. The micro transit has been really booming, but you know, we want it micro to be a connector to our fixed route. And so it's, we're hoping to do a lot of engagement with residents, phone focus groups and, and are people willing to pay more for transit, you know? Or do they want a very slim version of transit? With the World Cup 2026, Mark has been doing the study right now for transit to go to the airport, working on connections from Johnson County. So we really need to look at what we're doing with our transit. So on housing, the, the county commission passed some of our COVID funds to increase our home preservation, our home rehab program. I always say the, the most affordable housing that we have is the housing that we already have. And so how can we, most of the housing in Johnson County was built in the 50s, 60s. And so we have a large supply of housing that needs repair, that needs safety issues. And when you tear down a house, as we're seeing in a lot of places in Northeast, then once that house is torn down, it's now a 1.2, 3 million house. So we looking at, you know, additional home repair program to support cities. Also worked on a new eviction mediation program to support residents, especially many of our seniors, you know, that have health problems, they'll get behind in their rent, people with mental health challenges. How do we support them working, you know, with our landlords? So our parks, Johnson County, it blows me away. You know, 10 million visits a year in Johnson County parks, but Meadowbrook and Antioch, 25% of the visits are to Meadowbrook and Antioch. And Meadowbrook had about 1 million last year. So that is our new, you know, one of our newest parks and how, you know, visited and how well-loved our Northeast parks are. And so this, you know, last, the last one, you know, wanting to be your voice on the county commission. I see your mayor each month at the Northeast Mayor's meeting and each of you, please, you know, call me, text me. I love Northeast. I love city of Mission. And so I'm just really proud, you know, to represent you. So any thoughts or questions, input?
Yeah, any questions yet, Debbie?
As you're looking at growth and continuous large buildings with parking lots, climate action goals need to focus on pervious parking. The stormwater and runoff issues are directly related to the concrete and the cement. And, you know, we could look at this at the city level. I'm hoping to present something to sustainability, but I'd love to see the county as you're doing libraries and giant buildings. We're creating no more than straight concrete and it's, that's the runoff problems and the stormwater problems and it's going to get worse. So I'd recommend that we talk to the sustainability director and see if there's something that can be done when developers are putting proposals together, that you look at the parking situation. That goal in and of itself can alleviate a lot of stormwater and runoff issues.
No, thank you. That's a, and, and I brought up about our cars program that we use recycled. You know, we, if we dig up, I mean, and are unincorporated, when we dig up asphalt, what are we doing with this asphalt? You know, how we're recycling that asphalt?
Commissioner Fast, I had a question about the opioid settlement funds. I had seen something that on the county's funds so far, there was sort of a big chunk that was spent on jail mail screening. And you know, we've talked about our mental health co-responders and what can kind of be done on the prevention side or the treatment side. And so I was wondering, is the county exploring other uses for the rest of its opioid funds? Or will there be discussions about that?
So yeah, for the first round, you know, we went basically with what county departments brought forth. A lot was Narcan this morning. We had a morning session on fentanyl and the increase of fentanyl use by our youth, fentanyl poisoning by our youth. But yeah, then that screening for me was interesting how, I mean, in the jail, like they were showing, you know, just can be the, fentanyl can just be the touch of your, you know, your pencil, your fingertip and how that comes into the jail, comes into, you know, our different buildings. And so that was on that. But I, next year, we're going to do more of a good deliberation, asking more for community solicitation, which we didn't have time this year.
Any other questions? All right. Thanks. We always appreciate the updates. All right. Next we will jump back to action items. So from our planning commission, we do have one item coming forward from the planning commission for consideration this evening, which is a lot split at 5537 and 5541 Woodson Street. Brian, will you please provide your report?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is regarding a lot split of one property with two homes on it. The homes are addressed as 5537, 5541 Woodson Street. Both homes are occupied right now and separate families and they would just like to be able to split the lot so they have individual houses. This was presented to the planning commission on March 25th and recommended for approval by the, to the city council by a vote of nine to zero. Just a quick description, the lot is currently 120 linear feet along Woodson. So if we were to split the lot, that'd be 60 linear feet for each lot, a depth of 145 linear feet. And that's consistent with all the other lots within our block, which is where zoning code prescribes. So as I said, this was approved for the city council's consideration of the city planning commission meeting on March 25th.
All right. Do we have any member of the public who would like to comment on this issue? Seeing none, I would open it up for council discussion. Do we have any questions for Brian? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution approving a lot split for 5537 and 5541 Woodson Street.
Mayor, I move the city council adopt a resolution approving the lot split for 5537, 5541 Woodson Street.
Motion of second, any further discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
Hi.
Ryan.
Hi.
Louden.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Wolfinghouse.
Hi.
Crane.
Hi.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Next we'll move into our committee reports. Councilmember Ryard, will you please provide a report from the Finance Administration Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Finance and Administration Committee met on April 3rd and considered two items. The meeting minutes and the CMB application for Avalito's LLC were approved under the consent agenda earlier tonight. No items will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Louden, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Absolutely. The Community Development Committee also met on April 3rd and considered eight items. The meeting minutes, waterworks, part site furnishings and a right-of-way use agreement for a portion of Marway Street between Noll and Roland Drive were approved under the consent agenda earlier tonight. Mohawk, Mohawk Park Phase Two, the 2025 through 2029 five-year cars program, a task order for design of the 2025 cars project. Purchase of the road traffic signal and contract award for the 2024 localized stormwater projects will be considered under the regular consent agenda this evening. Mohawk, Mohawk Park Phase Two. Mohawk Park at 67th and Lamar became part of the city's park system in the early 2000s. Phase one improvements began in, in, were, began in, were subs- substantively completed in August 2023. Phase two project improvements include completing the 10-foot wide perimeter trail, adding additional parking, all abilities playground and shade surfacing installation, multi-sport court grading and native landscape plantings. In order to take advantage of the savings offered by the manufacturers and to allow sufficient lead time, God, no, sorry, I'm not reading well tonight. The playground elements were procured under separate agreements. The total cost associated with the playground and amenities equals $809,448.40, which is already encumbered and separate from this contract award. Bids for the remaining phase two improvements were received on March 21st, 2024, with three firms submitting bids. Based on a review and evaluation of the bids, staff recommends approval of a contract with Sands Construction Company for Mohawk Park Phase Two improvements in an amount not to exceed $681,565. Sands Construction was a contractor for the phase one improvements and their bid represents a savings of $238,582 over the engineer's estimate. Based on timing of the land and water conservation fund approval process, we had to withdraw our application for the second phase of Mohawk, Mohawk Park. We will look to submit a future application for either Broadmoor Park or Anderson Park improvements. Mayor, I move the city council approve a contract with Sands Construction Company for Mohawk Park Phase Two improvements in an amount not to exceed $681,565.
Second. Right, we have a motion of second. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council questions or comments? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Ryan.
Hi.
Louden.
Hi.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Wolfinghouse.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Carpenter Davis.
Hi.
Crane.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, 7B, 2025 through 2029 five-year cars program. Each year, cities submit a five-year road improvement plan to the county cars program, which funds up to 50% of eligible projects, construction and construction inspection costs. Cities are responsible for design, right-of-way and utility relocation costs. Mission has a number of cars. Mission has a number of Cars eligible streets included throughout the city. Each city is required to pass a resolution adopting a five-year plan based on their own unique goals and objectives, and Cars projects are ultimately adopted as part of the county's annual budget process. The final commitment of funds occurs through the approval of specific interlocal agreements for each project. The recommended 2025 through 2029 Cars Program is similar to the 2024, 2028 Cars Program, although there have been some increases and decreases in estimated costs from last year's program. Costs have been updated for the 2025 through 2028 projects, and proposed project in 2029 is 51st Street from Lamar Avenue to Eastern City Limits. Approval of the resolution does not specifically commit the city to any expenditure of funds and is used to communicate the county's car, the county, communicate to the county the city's planned Cars eligible projects over the next five-year planning horizon. Mayor, I move the city council approve the resolution adopting the five-year City-County Street Improvement Program for the City of Mission for 2025 through 2029.
Second. All right, we have a motion a second. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comments or questions? Yes, Debbie?
I just want to thank the county for the Cars Program. It really supports this small community, and we appreciate your help.
All right, seeing no further comments, Robin, please call the roll.
Crane?
Hi.
Josie?
Hi.
Loudon?
Hi.
Ryer?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Carpenter Davis?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Motion carries.
7C is a task order design of 2025 Cars Project. Mission, Mission's 2025 Cars Project is 63rd Street from Noll Avenue to Row Avenue, estimated cost of $720,926.42. The scope of work includes a three-inch mill and overlay, spot sidewalk and curb replacement, spot full death pavement repairs, stormwater repairs, and pavement markings. The design agreement with Olson includes design services, utility coordination, easement acquisition, project management, and bid and construction phase services in an amount not to exceed $32,460. This project will be administered by the City of Mission and is a joint project with the City of Prairie Village. Design costs will be, will be split between Mission and Prairie Village at a 50/50 cost share. Mayor, I move the city council approve a task order with Olson for design of 63rd Street from Noll Avenue to Row Avenue project in an amount not to exceed $32,460.
Second.
Ben, it's 66.
It's 66.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion a second. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comments or questions? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Josie?
Hi.
Loudon?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Ryer?
Hi.
Carpenter Davis?
Hi.
Crane?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Motion carries.
7D, Row Traffic Signal. The Row Avenue Rehabilitation Project from 63rd Street to Johnson Drive is the city's 2024 Cars Project and includes a two-inch mill and overlay, sidewalk retaining walls, stormwater improvements, traffic signal removal and replacement pavement, pavement markings, and associated upper... Yes, upper pertenses. Design was complimented, was completed by Olson in March 2024, and the project is currently under review by KDOT for construction later this spring. Olson's traffic engineer notified city staff that the traffic signal equipment, including the sign poles, cabinet, and radar, currently has a lead time ranging from 10 to 30 weeks, depending on specific components. Based on this information, it was recommended that the Mission purchase the equipment outside the construction contract to minimize project delays. No markup charge, no markup will be charged from the contractor if this equipment is purchased by the city, which will result in savings of approximately 15% of the total equipment cost. Staff obtained two quotes for purchase of the signal poles, traffic cabinet, and radar. Mid-America Signal Incorporated was the lowest and most responsible bidder with a total cost purchase of $166,688. If approved, staff will order the traffic signal equipment and store it at the Public Works Facility until it can be installed by the contractor. Mayor, I move the city council approve the purchase of the traffic signal equipment for Row Avenue from 63rd Street to Johnson Drive Rehabilitation Project from Mid-America Signal Incorporated in the amount of $166,688.
All right, we have a motion a second. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comments or questions? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Crane?
Hi.
Loudon?
Hi.
Josie?
Hi.
Carpenter Davis?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Ryer?
Hi.
Motion carries.
7E, 2024 Localized Stormwater Projects. Over the last few budget cycles, funding to address stormwater repair and maintenance projects has been increased in the five-year stormwater capital improvement program. A portion is earmarked annually to promptly address urgent issues such as sinkholes or system failures. The remaining funds are allocated to proactively tackle repaired neighborhood-level stormwater maintenance projects. These funds focus primarily on planned CMP replacements, some of which are linked with street projects. This dedicated funding offers flexibility to address persistent stormwater challenges in neighborhoods and other areas of the city. In April 2023, staff presented a methodology to review, rate, and prioritize localized stormwater projects that are not deemed emergencies. This presentation included initial rankings and cost estimates for various stormwater projects that have been identified by staff or residents throughout the years. The 2023 CIP Stormwater Program included approximately $360,000 to design and construct the top four priority projects located at 6126 Plenwood Street, 5030 Foxwood Drive, 5230 and 5234 Riggs Road, and 6012 Rosewood Drive. Design was not completed in 2023, so the project funding carried over to 2024. Project scope entails pre-construction surveys, removal of existing structures and installation, and/or repair of new structures. Bidding occurred in March with four bidders responding. Infrastructure Solutions LLC submitted the lowest and most responsive bid. Staff recommends approval of a contract with Infrastructure Solutions LLC in an amount not to exceed $209,685. Construction is anticipated to begin in April or May of 2024 and is estimated to be completed within 60 calendar days. Mayor, I move the city council approve a contract with Infrastructure Solutions LLC for construction of the 2024 localized stormwater projects in an amount not to exceed $209,685.
Second. Motion a second. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, any council comments or questions? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Crane?
Hi.
Josie?
Hi.
Carpenter Davis?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Ryer?
Hi.
Loudon?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Motion carries.
This concludes my report.
Thank you. We do not have any unfinished or new business tonight, so we will move now to comments from the city council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone on the council have something they'd like to share tonight? Yes, Debbie?
Ward Three will hold a meeting tomorrow evening at the community center at 7:00 PM. All are invited.
And Cheryl?
I had the opportunity to attend the Driving Out the Darkness in the Heartland Conference this week. It was focusing on combating antisemitism in our communities. The Jewish Community Relation Bureau and AJC sponsored the conference, bringing people from all over the United States to speak to this issue. I found it to be very beneficial, considering what's going on in our country at this point in time. We had an opportunity for state and local officials to have a working lunch. And with that, we were aware of the scope of this issue and considered it as we continue to change policies and make adjustments to make sure that our community remains a welcome to it. This information is on their website. I would encourage everyone to take a look at it. It's very informative. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Yeah.
I had one, partially to kind of piggyback on what Debbie was saying. But tonight, I, we heard from two folks who I think had very different perceptions of the city. And I think it's good to get a diverse group of people to give an opinion so that we can get the most complete picture of how folks are reacting and how they think we're doing of the job that we're doing. So that is why I wanted to say, if you are a Ward Three member and are listening, please come to the, the meeting at the community center tomorrow at 7:00, because I think it's getting opinions like that that makes it easier to do our jobs.
Yeah, we always try to tell everyone to participate. I know when I, when I've gone and spoke to Rushton students and Girl Scout troops and everything, I'm always telling them, come, come to council and share, share your thoughts. All right, any other public or council comments? Seeing none, we will move into our council committee liaison reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with the various activities of our boards, commissions, and committees. So first is councilmembers Boltinghouse and Loudon for Sustainability Commission.
I might ask Councilmember Loudon to leave this one, just given that I'm virtual.
I was hoping you were going to.
Keep it short and sweet.
I'm sorry, I didn't prepare anything for tonight.
Okay. Next, we would have councilmembers Crane and Schmidt for Parks Recreation and Tree Commission.
We had a great Parks and Rec meeting and subsequently had a review of what the bike lane process looks like, and it was very well attended. I thought it was very well-run. Got a lot of information about that, and that's where Dave came in. So I, I thought it was great. Parks and Rec is doing a great job. The park, the emphasis this city, this city is putting on the park system is second to none, and I'm very proud of that. And I'm, Brian, I think both of us are happy to be on that committee because we're doing a lot like it.
The only other thing I'll note is as part of the, the tour that I had of the community center a couple of weeks ago, it's really excited to see some of the maintenance that was going on. And I believe the restrooms that were under maintenance completed last week on the 12th. And just based on the preliminary work that we had seen, it looks like it's great. So very excited to see continual improvements going on there.
All right, great. Next, we'll hear an update from councilmembers Ryer and Josie on the Mission Magazine editorial board.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We did not meet in April, but we are looking forward to meeting in May, kind of talking about the next issues. The last issue should have hit everybody's mailbox. I know it hit mine and enjoyed reading it. So, yeah, thank you.
Great. And finally, we have councilmember Carpenter Davis with the Family Adoption Committee.
Family Adoption Committee has not met, but Penn provided me with a lot of information that I'm going through at this point in time to prepare a, a report for the council.
Great.
Mayor, I, I will provide a sustainability update.
Okay.
So we met on April 1st, and at that time, we were able to hear from Chairperson Schmidt, Lauren, who came and kind of gave the same walkthrough of what we were presented with on council previously in our legislative meeting. I found it to be really informative. You know, Justin and I are both new here, kind of learning the ways of the commission. I think we're both in a good spot now to understand how they operate, you know, learn more about what the different subcommittees do. We're excited to hear, you know, they, they've been sharing their plans about some of the projects they have in mind this year. I know one item that keeps getting mentioned is collaborating with PRT to be considering planting a tree this year on behalf of the commission. And then they're also excited for the Green, I guess, call it the, the Sustainability Fair that we have hosted previously, that they're also going to be hosting again this fall. And then they were also at the Bunny Extravaganza. There was a Sustainability Commission table at that event, just sharing with residents and patrons that there was, you know, we, we have an active commission there. So those are just a few things recently that stood out from our, our meeting.
Great, thank you. So next, we will move into my report and appointments. So while we are certainly going to miss Councilmember Thomas and her service toward one and our entire Mission community, I am pleased to bring forward an appointment to fill that position. Councilmember Bolting, Council, sorry, President Boltinghouse, City Administrator Laura Smith, and I had the pleasure of interviewing interested candidates. And although a relative newcomer to Mission, Ms. Hayden Chomposi's credentials and enthusiasm for building community were really impressive to all of us. So therefore, I put before you the appointment of Josephah Hayden Chomposi to fill the Ward One Councilmember vacancy with a term expiring December 31st, 2025. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move the city council uphold the appointment of Josephah Hayden Chomposi as Ward One Councilmember with the term expiring December 31st, 2025.
Second. All right, we have a motion a second. Any council comments or questions on this item? Yeah, Debbie?
Is the council member to be...
Yeah, yeah. So unfortunately, Josephah had hoped to join us virtually this evening from a conference that she was already planning to attend for work, but had a, a change in her plans and so was unable to dial in tonight. But we, she will be coming, if you all confirm her tonight, she will be coming for swearing-in at our May 1st committee meetings.
I enjoyed looking at her resume. It's good. Thank you.
Right, any other comments or questions from council?
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, Ben?
Yeah, just extremely interesting and excited to, to see Josephah nominated for the position here. I was surprised, really blown away that I actually recognized her from, from her day job using some open source software that she's a part of. So yeah, really excited to get to know her. Hopefully, we'll, we'll be seeing her soon.
Yeah. Great. Robin, want to call the roll?
Ryer?
Hi.
Loudon?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Carpenter Davis?
Hi.
Crane?
Hi.
Josie?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, congratulations to Josephah on her appointment. And again, we'll get, get her a better introduction to the full governing body when she comes for her swearing-in at our May 1st committee meeting. So now moving into our city administrators' report. Laura, do you have any items you'd like to share with council tonight? Oh, business updates first, all right.
I have one, and I have a ribbon-cutting grand opening also. So we recommend, we welcome Zulaga Real Estate Company to Mission. They'll be opening over on Woodson Street in the next month or so. And then Fiorella's Boutique also on Woodson and Johnson Drive will be hosting their ribbon-cutting next Thursday, beginning at 4:30. So Mayor Flora and perhaps Councilmember Boltinghouse will be at that, so feel free to join. Everyone is welcome for them. Thank you.
Great.
Other than that, Mayor, we, you did not have the March interim financials in your packet because we were frantically preparing for the auditor's visit. I would like to give kudos to our Budget and Finance Manager, Christine Corrith, and as well to Justin, who has spent a lot of time in preparing for that. They were onsite one day, which I think is unheard of in my 19 years here. And we're very complimentary of the work that had been done. So we will get you March financials, but we wanted to make the auditors happy first. Also, we, in looking at ahead at the May agendas, we've made the decision to cancel next Wednesday's work session, so you get a Wednesday night back. And then we will discuss the budget portion, CIP budget, during the May 1st Finance and Administration Committee meeting. So no work session on the 24th. That conversation will carry over to May 1st. And that's all I have this evening.
All right. So next, we'll move into executive session. We do have the need for an executive session this evening, so the governing body will adjourn to executive session for the allotted time. When that time is expired, the governing body will reconvene to do one of the following. One, extend the time required for discussion and return to executive session, or two, continue with our city council meeting. As a reminder to the public, the governing body may take no binding action in an executive session. I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the city council recess to executive session in accordance with KSA 754319, B2, and B6 for consultation with an attorney and preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property. Also attending the executive session will be City Attorney Dave Martin, City Attorney Jacob Turner, Chief of Police Dan Madden, and City Administrator Laura Smith. The open meeting will resume in the council chambers at 8:40 PM.
It will be just Mr. Martin, not Mr. Turner, who is not available this evening.
Do I need to restate the motion?
So motion, motion a second. Any discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Loudon?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Ryer?
Hi.
Josie?
Hi.
Crane?
Hi.
Carpenter Davis?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Hello, could anyone hear still?
I mean, I can hear you.
Hey Ben. Yeah, I had the same question. I don't know if we're uh, going in or not. I will see. Oh, okay. Rob, Robin says we cannot. So I think that's it for us then.
Boo.
All right, it is eight forty and we are returning from executive session. I would entertain a motion. Or sorry, back to session. Yes, yes. And then with no need to continue our executive session. We are adjourned, but before we adjourn tonight, I wanted to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website at missioncast.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.